Good evening, everyone. I call a Wednesday, June 18th, 2025 council meeting to order at 5:00 PM this afternoon. I met with council members in the sixth floor council conference room for a briefing to discuss tonight's agenda. Now, here at 5:30, we moved here to the first four chambers to conduct the council meeting in person, and because we encourage community involvement, we invite the public to join us in person or participate via remote option through Zoom and/or view on BCAT. Councilmember Cofflin, I expect to be here around 6:00 PM. Next, we'll turn to the mayor. Welcome, Mayor Wheeler, for the mayor's report.
All right. Well, good evening, council president, councilors, members of the public. It's good to see you. Got a couple of slides to share and then a couple of comments. All right, utility land management plan update. So this, we have completed what is now a draft that is up for the public to make comments on. So as you can see on the slide here, we will accept comments till July 2nd. We are looking to receive as much input as possible so we have a well-rounded plan to move forward and plan with for the future. So through your networks, if you'll join me in sharing this plan far and wide, we'll get that necessary public comments that we need. Next slide. You know, I wanted to share a, you know, one of the quiet things that the city does day in and day out and that often goes unrecognized. James and Lilian Walker Park, right here, and I think all of you are aware of the, of this building here. It's a, it's a Public Works pump station. And we, as we do throughout the city, our crews, we spruce up and we do paint and landscaping work. We modernize when we can. We look for something that's aesthetically pleasing when we're done so it fits with the neighborhood. This time, we received such, well, for one thing, I received this before and after, and I thought I was going to share this, but then we received input from the neighbors who were noticing and complimenting the city on the work that was done. And, you know, I thought I would highlight this as a small thing that can be done in the course of our daily lives and our daily work, especially that improves the neighborhood. And so this was well-received, and I kind of wanted to show you some good work that was performed by our staff in the city of Bremerton. So up, the upper one before, the lower one is after. So modernized colors, lighting, and landscaping were all spruced up. Next slide. Can't talk about this enough. Coming soon, July 12th and July 13th, we will have the grand opening with a ribbon cutting for Quincy Square. And so this will be a wonderful kickoff. As it says up here, community gathering, live performances, local vendors, there will be food, entertainment, music. This will be the community gathering place for our surrounding neighborhoods and I suspect our surrounding cities. So I, we will have, I'm sure, a lot of us getting together down here as a community and celebrating together. And this is wonderful. We are close to being done, and I'll, I know, and I'll keep sharing updates as we get closer. And so some good, some good news for you, and this is great news for our youth especially, and anybody who uses a track for exercise, and anybody who likes to walk their dog on a track, Lulu Haddon Park is opening tomorrow. So that fence will come down. I've been able to share that with the, with the neighborhood as I'm out in their neighborhoods, especially with the school-aged children, and they are, they're excited. That is, you know, you live in a, when you live in a city, in an urban environment, and you are opening up green space again with outdoor, with, you know, essentially it's exercise equipment, but for them, it's a playground. And so for that, you know, it's just wonderful to do. The ADUs, I wanted to, you know, highlight the new program that's come out with the plans that are predeveloped. Kitsap Sun did a nice article, and there was leadership across the jurisdictions. This is what happens when, when we all share our specific knowledge and experiences and we come together and, but not worrying about who gets credit, and then great things can happen. And so I wanted to let you know, our plans are available in our office. So for folks who are thinking about ADUs, now's the time, and they are free. So, and we're looking forward to working with everybody on that. We had an exciting weekend. I don't know how many thousands of people came into the city for the People's March, for Juneteenth, for the No Kings demonstration on the bridge. There was thousands. And from everything I have heard, it was peaceful. It was a, it was community coming together, and that's what you look for. Second vote came back this Sunday, and so more to come on that. The state, in the press conference, you heard it from Director Neve and the governor, they're committed to sustaining our fast ferry also at current levels through FIFA. We are working with WashDOT, and that's working with Kitsap Transit through Transit together with WashDOT to see exactly how that's going to work with the funding they have available. But we have that commitment from the leadership. I think it's an awesome thing. Now it's time to start making our, the business case why this needs to continue after FIFA World Cup. We'll be working on that. All right, that's it, council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, I'll turn to our city clerk, Ms. Hoover, for the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Younger. For approval on the consent agenda are the following items. A, claims and check register, approval of the following checks and electronic fund transfers. One, check numbers 411-228 through 411-394, and EFT numbers V3, I'm sorry, V43-736 through V43-838, and the grand total amount of $5,142,776.30. Two, regular payroll for pay period ending May 31st, 2025, and the amount of $1,149,196.77. Three, regular payroll payout for pay period ending May 31st, 2025, and the amount of Four, regular payroll for Teamsters retro pay for pay periods January 1st, 2025 through April 30th, 2025, and the amount of $176,493.90. B, minutes of council meeting, June 4th, 2025. C, minutes of study session, June 11th, 2025. D, ordinance number 5515 to amend Bremerton Municipal Code, Chapter 10.36.010, entitled "Compression Brakes Prohibited." And E, professional services agreement with Northwest Hydraulic Consultants, Inc. for the Parish Creek Fish Passage Barrier Removal Project. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the consent agenda items, we only ask that you state your name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Does any member of the public wish to comment on any of the consent agenda items?
Jose Camacho, Friends of, thank you. Jose Camacho, Friends of Smith Cove, Rock the Block. There is an agenda item, 4B, regarding approval of the minutes. Those minutes are inaccurate, and they are also silencing. And this is an institutional problem I see often. For instance, one, the name of a community member, Joey Hayes, is misspelled. But even worse than that, various people, including those I know, including myself, came up here to comment, and they all give their affiliation, their community groups, the entity they belong to, all of them. Those are not indicated in the minute. So this is a way of silencing community organizations that have come together, often to speak out against powerful private commercial interests. We should not be erased in this way in the historical record. The signing list upfront is frequently not there. It wasn't there on June 4th. The minutes I'm speaking about are about the June 4th series of hearings. So when we come in here, there's nothing to sign. You guys can't go back and write down our affiliations, the groups we represent, the groups we belong to. And these are all true grassroots organization, not commercial cartels. We are not just random individuals shooting the breeze. We are community groups speaking out against lobbies, commercial interests. And those commercial interests are infiltrated in city government. So it's important that you have the weak voice, not just the strong voice, up here in front of you. We are part of the laws that will eventually be created through you. We deserve to have our full voice heard and reflected in the minutes. There's an expression, epistemic oppression. When the knowledge base of a community is erased of particular communities, that is a skewing of society, a skewing of law, and this is what, this is a reflection of, and it's a systemic problem in the city, including the erasure of actual law. Juneteenth, Akuye Karen Vargas on Juneteenth was swarmed by a bunch of competing interests that had nothing to do with Juneteenth. Again, it is a silencing, epistemic oppression.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, again, this is not public recognition, so anyone on the consent agenda items, consent agenda items.
My name is Robin Weldon, and one of the items on the consent agenda, on the agenda packet, in the agenda packet, is the minutes from June 4th. So I feel it's perfectly fine to call, to talk to that and talk to the erasure of the community groups that came here as one. This council chamber was filled to capacity with people, and it was full of love. And those, and the people are not even, even recognized on your list. I'm there, I click on my name, and it goes to, it doesn't say what I said, it says what the agenda pack, the, that you adopted, the invalid comp plan. But that's it, the ordinances, all of that to do with it, nothing about what I said, nothing that Marwan Cameron said. He's not, he's not recognized. Akuye Vargas is not recognized. Rock the Block, Joslyn de la Madrid, oh my gosh, Kitsap Solidarity Coalition is not recognized for talking about the IHRC or RA, whatever it is, the adoption of, of policies that broadly define antisemitism to the point where she was reading a letter from a Palestinian mother that her, that her children were told that they didn't belong in Lion's Field. That's what that kind of adoption of policy does. It takes apart our community, it breaks apart our community. And last June 4th was a coming together of our community. I didn't see it, but, but Marwan Cameron also wrote just a comprehensive email to you, just outlining everything that, that should be done as a people-centered approach to housing and homelessness and the environment and the climate, which is not being done by this legislative body, which I'm very much aware you are a legislative body and that the mayor is an executive body. And a legislative body listens to their constituents. They listen and make informative choices based on that.
Hi, I'm Jo Walter, and I don't even know why I'm here today. There is just so much going on in this world and things that I want to do something about, that I feel like I want people to become activated about, and I'm stuck today for what to do. So here I am, taking advantage of the three minutes that are my privilege here in my town. I'd like everybody to get activated about the fact that we have people getting picked up.
Ms. Walter, this isn't, this isn't public recognition. We're still on the consent agenda.
Oh, man. So I get to come back. I get to come back.
I've said it, I've said it a couple of times, but, but, well, guess what? You get another bite at the apple in a few minutes. So that, that was just, that was just a warm-up, so. All right, so again, I've said it twice. This is for the consent agenda. Mr. Sorenson, could you see if there's anyone online that would like to comment again on the consent agenda?
There's no hands at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll turn to the council for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Hang on, we're gonna, we're gonna stop for a second.
I would like to address public concern about the, the minutes. I actually have my own notes right here, and I wonder if this is an appropriate time to address them, council president.
How about during your council member report, please?
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Stick around, folks.
We have a motion in a second. Councilmember, or councilmember, I just promoted you. I don't know if that's a promotion, though. City Clerk Hoover, do you have a question?
Okay, so we have a motion by Mockler and a second by Rebalauski. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Is this a precursor on how the rest of the meeting's gonna go?
Yep.
Call for the question.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
No.
Frye?
Yes.
Rebalauski?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five yeses, one no.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to public recognition. As indicated on the agenda, public recognition provides an opportunity for attendees to address the council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda. This is not interactive, and the council is here to listen to your concerns and questions. And a reminder that now that it is election season, please refrain from any comments on political campaigns or ballot measures. There'll be no public comments accepted via Zoom tonight unless prior arrangements were made through the city clerk by calling 360-473-5323 at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. Ms. Hoover, did we have anyone make those arrangements?
There were no arrangements.
Okay, thank you. Again, we only ask that you state your name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. A timer system we use that everyone is treated fairly. With that, I open up for public recognition. Go ahead, Ms. Walter.
Thank you. So the things on my mind that I would like others to have on their minds and to feel moved to try to do something about are the fact that people are getting picked up. They're getting picked up without warrants, without identification, without uniforms. They're wearing masks. This is happening, we don't think it's happening here, but we know that we're next. And I don't understand how it's possible in our country for people to be removed and taken away without any identification. And I guess a next step would be to talk to our police department and get some advice about what to do if we see masked men trying to pick people up off the street and take them away. What else is on my mind? That we seem to be on our way to, I don't know that we are, but our president seems to be wanting to send us to war in Iran. We are, and so what can we do? We're hearing what sounds to me like, you know, weapons of mass destruction, that they, they're a danger to us, and we're gonna have to go and do something about that. And I, we live in a military community. I don't want to see any of our young people get sent over to Iran to fight a war on behalf of Israel. I, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And what I'm reading, it seems like it shouldn't make any sense to anybody, but I'm reading arguments and hearing from both Republicans and Democrats who feel like, we're stuck with this, we just have to do this. And I think we all got to get on the phone to Emily Randall and Patty Murray and Maria Cantwell every day, multiple times a day, unless you can think of something else to do, and, and tell them to fight against it. There's something called the War Powers Resolution, which is gonna remind the president that he needs to, he can't go and declare war on his own. So if you contact them and let them know you'd like them to support this upcoming resolution, that's one thing that can be done. I got 30 seconds left, and I can't think of anything else to say. Thank you very much. I hope you'll contact your legislators.
Hi, I'm Joslyn La Madrid. I'm with the Bremerton Prayer Walk and Rock the Block, and I was just here to, like I do every week, to kind of give you guys an update on what I'm seeing on the streets and kind of some of these smaller actions that we can do to kind of help, help our community a lot better. You know, I, I love when the mayor comes up here and gives us his report, but I really would, I, instead of us having a facade of beauty of this community and spending more time talking about how aesthetically beautiful Bremerton is, let's look at the beauty of what our hearts are here. And the truth is, is that we're, we're, the aesthetics of our community are taking a priority over people. And unfortunately, I don't think that's what we need to do. I don't think that's what we should do. We have illusory promises and resources that are being made to individuals on the streets. They end up coming back. With the recent construction down on the streets, many people are not coming down there. We've had a lot of the nonprofits back off because it's just too difficult to navigate in the downtown area. And we can see where those, where those periods of time in between the messages of hope and the messages of worthiness and the messages of love, how they degrade on people's, on just their wherewithal and their ability to come out of this. And it's really heartbreaking. We're seeing more, we're seeing more people overdosing down on the streets and overdosing alone. Because one of the things that is a byproduct of this anti-camping ordinance is people are being shooed along, which is not in the ordinance at all, but that's what the police are doing. They're utilizing it in order to get rid of, you know, we started giving out these blankets that are easily rolled up because people are getting their stuff taken away. And it, under the guise of this anti-camping ordinance, and it's not even in there, and people are left more vulnerable. We don't have the resources for people right now to get out of the situation, and so we need to make the best of the situation until we can get them out. And the truth of the matter is, is that we can do it. We can do it, and like I've said every single time, if you're not gonna help with any kind of legislative action, then just don't hinder us with the legislative action that you guys have. And that's one of the problems that we're having, is that all of these groups that are down there are really trying to make a difference in a solution, and a solution-based, instead of just hiding it for the aesthetic beauty of the city. We're trying to make a difference, and it's much more difficult. The other thing that I just, is that we need a restroom down there. We need a restroom down there, and we have shown you that you can do it with a porta-potty. The funds have been allocated for a porta-potty, and there's no reason why we don't have a porta-potty down there at this time. There is absolutely no reason, and so I would encourage you guys to all get voic, to make your voices big to get that to happen, because it's only gonna get worse this summer.
Adrian District 2, Chair Youngkin, Board. I know you, this is a lot of stuff you already know, but I want to talk to integrity and, and just, because I'm frustrated, I'm probably just, just gonna gripe and rant a little. So I apologize, I'm a little bit tired today, I've been working really hard. I want to speak a little bit to real estate economics. It's kind of my problem because it's my occupation. There's a lot of apartments I go through that are absolutely trashed, holes in drywall, full paints, replace all appliances, devices. And one of the things that, that's more or less common, and I wish it wasn't so, is that people that already are on housing assistance are the people that have that, the worst problems. And most of that comes down to entitlement. And it's not your problem, it's a society problem, and I wish there was a way that we could fix it or address it. I've heard of other people here talk about the problems with prices and affordability in Bremerton and nationally, et cetera, et cetera. And I know, we all know about supply and demand, and I know that, you know that there's a difference between real estate versus regular markets. Real estate in particular is three to five years, up to 20-plus years. Includes models of different regions, small property owners, public, private dealers, as well as large corporations, which I hope you guys will allow so that we can, so that everybody can be able to get into apartments. The, a lot of the problems that I see is that everybody has to deal with in the real estate industry, has to do with people not paying on time, if at all, evictions, damages, which causes market burdens. Public entities in particular, like Bremerton Housing Alliance or et cetera, have to put a lot of this burden onto the taxpayers. Problems with tenants that are, that I've seen include hoarding, drugs, as well as porch pirates, et cetera. When I was growing up on a farm, I learned about hard work, showing up on time, staying sober, and respecting other people's property. This drives up prices for all of us. I wish there was a way that anybody, and all of us, can, can address these to make Bremerton more affordable, to make the small economy that we have in Kitsap better for everyone. This is your, not just your problem, but it is your legacy, it's all our problems.
Just start talking. Hi, my name's Matthew Coffey. Just want to say, X, thank you guys for all being here, all the work you're all doing, thank the mayor. First thing I'd like to say is, could everybody on the council get off of their computers and actually pay attention? Because their notes are being taken, and I don't feel that the people are being heard because you're focused on something else. I would appreciate that, personally. The other thing I want to say is that I had worked through Salvation Army, through, all through COVID. I learned a lot. I've never been homeless, but I learned a lot, and I've worked with a lot of people down there. And I could tell everybody in this room, whether you like to think it or not, you're only one mental health episode away from being on that street, having to use the restroom on the street, having to go down there and beg for food. If you were homeless within one month, you would be using drugs because of all the trauma that happens to you within that first 30 days. You would be using drugs to take that pain away, the amount of trauma and injury that is done to the people out on the streets. I've witnessed it firsthand myself. And that is, a young man came off the, over here, perfectly fine, he came into the shelter, within a week, everything he owned was gone, absolutely gone, stolen. Because yes, it is a, you know, the, we, it's a fight out there. Whoever's the strongest is gonna win. All his belongings, his wallet was gone with all of his ID, his bank cards, he had no way of telling who he was to anybody. Then all the other stuff started, where he got beat up, then he got raped. Next thing you know, he's using drugs to get out of that, and you guys would all be too, I'm telling you. Each and every one of us in this room would be using drugs to escape the trauma and the tragic things that are happening out there on our streets. And if you don't think it is, come hang out with me. I would take you to talk with these people firsthand. Only thing I could tell you we need to do is, all the money that is going and being given to us for, you know, the homeless and the people that are vulnerable, it's getting dispersed in too many areas for like administration and all these other things. It needs and all these other things. It needs to be put into the community. Build a building. Get a warehouse. Convert it. Bring these people in. Nobody got drug, become a drug addict overnight or an alcoholic. Nobody's gonna get sober or clean and live a good life overnight. These one-night shelters are not working. We need long-term housing that gives the people the capability to get their lives together and to be able to get out there and become a productive member of society. If we don't do that, this is never gonna change, and we're gonna keep spending taxpayers' money to arrest them, release, arrest, release, arrest, release, ambulance, medical, all those things. It costs us more to keep it as it is. Thank you.
Jose Camacho, friend of Smith's Cove, Rock the Block. Thank you. Jose Camacho, friend of Smith's Cove, Rock the Block. There is currently discussion about the multifamily tax exemption, eight-year, no strings attached versus 12-years percentage set aside by the developer for low-income slash affordable housing. I commend Councilmember Brett Belowski for starting the conversation. I dipped into the study session, I believe June 11, and went through almost a full hour before I hear the Chamber of Commerce representative up here continue with this mantra that the poor, little developers who are opportunity zone multimillionaires are so biased against. And then immediately Wesley Larson's name comes up, and he has an open invitation to get into a study session and contribute his thought, which, you know, we all know will be as absolutely predictable as gravity. And this little excursion into the city council's world shows the favoritism that I had been arguing is at the root of city corruption for quite a while now. And this is what you guys don't understand. We come up here not for therapy. Some of us come up here traumatized. And then we're given very short trips. We're actually gaslighted about the law. We have developer cartel members here and in the planning commission. And there's this open door to them. And then at the very beginnings of conversation about the MFTE, the no strings attached version, you've got this Chamber of Commerce enforcer coming down and trying to. And this is a problem. I've, I've gone all the way back years. When ordinary people speak, you guys simply don't even have ears. You just don't. We're here for a reason. And we should not have to demolish a stone wall to have our concerns heard and made into policy. The developer cartel is a stone wall. They're worth a fortune. They have corrupted this city. If you guys are erasing law and then no one dares speak of it, not the lawyers, not the mayor, not council member, there's a problem here. The problem is your favoritism towards white men with money. Stop it.
My name is Robin Weldon. I know you know me. Um, I'm from District Three. And I actually did not prepare a, um, a specific, um, public comment because, well, there's so many. But I would like to adopt, um, the comments of Jocelyn de la Madrid about, um, just, um, okay, she didn't say this, but I'm gonna say it. The culture of cruelty around, um, how we treat the homeless. The, um, the dehumanization and criminalization of, of our homeless neighbors. Um, many who were my neighbors before hyperinflated rents, and they were evicted and pushed out. Um, I also would like to adopt the comments by Matthew Coffey, um, about what it is like for a person, um, experiencing homelessness and going to the Salvation Army and not having ID or having during, in your, in this cities, that this legislative body voted on this, the, the inhumane and cruel anti-camping ordinance without shelter, without shelter in severe weather. Um, that has gone beyond that. People have, people have their things, um, taken and thrown away, their ID, their medical devices, their tents. I was at the first, um, um, sweep in November 2023. I videotaped for a full afternoon of one tent after the other being crushed and, and just zipped up, crushed, and thrown into the back of a garbage container. Um, one of the tents had a cat inside, and we all heard meow. And we stopped, the, the city workers stopped. And I felt sorry for the city workers having to do this dirty work, this dirty work that was voted on by this legislative body and our, um, um, mayor from the executive body. Um, you know, and then I had to come here, actually, and listen to the mayor actually talk about the before and after and the curb appeal, and then having Chris Tibbs come up and, and talk about giving a hundred thousand from ARC. And we did a public records request, and there was no record of that money. It was all a sham. It was just kind of stacking one side with just developer sharks, people who looked like-
Name of the vein, City of Bremerton. Um, I am by virtue of a whole lot of privilege. I'm a white woman, heyo. Um, but also because of a lot of really fantastic low-barrier and no-barrier programs. A first-generation college student, a survivor of a substance use disorder, a survivor of multiple suicide attempts, a survivor of domestic violence, and somebody who got to buy their first home for the first time, a thing I never thought I'd survive to get to do. Um, a thing that many of my family has never gotten to do. I'm the first person in my family from many generations to own a home. And it was because some folks who sat in a body of making decisions do what I do in my job every day and reflect on what I survived and who helped me survive that. Because I didn't pull myself up by my bootstraps. I don't just wear Birkenstocks for fun. I wear them on a regular basis. There ain't no straps on those to pull myself up by, literally or metaphorically. I just survived all of that because people cared enough to help me and because rules were made to make it easier for me to access the programs that I needed to get the help that got me to where I am today. I am nothing without the communities that have taken me in, and I've been in a lot of them. I've had to move a lot to get to where I am. And because people made decisions to make it easier to access care, easier to access education, even though I've got a lot of loan debt, you don't get as far as you do with a PhD without loan debt. And to get to where I am, to where I can afford what I have, and to where I can extend that grace to my community, to give them what I've learned, to take what I've learned, and to put it into the community that I've come to love over the last two years that I've lived here in, hey, I just bought a house, so I'm sticking around. I'm gonna keep loving this community. I get to do that because some other people cared a whole hell of a lot about me and others in my communities that I've lived in. And I think that you all are really smart folks who have probably done the same thing. But sometimes it can help to have to spend a summer time, taking some time to reflect. It's hot outside, it's cold indoors, take some time to think in the AC. That's what I like to do, especially because I start getting sunburns in my older age. Thank you.
Gala Breach, District Five. I'm coming up for the same thing I'm always up here for. Anyway, it is the, um, multifamily tax exemption. And I've just got some, I'm gonna read from both of these. So we have a cute little apartment complex right here in the corner. It's been there for as long as I can remember. Um, their taxable value is $3 million. There is 25 units. Imperably, right behind it, we have the B-flats. Um, we know that it cost them $6 million to make it. I think that's what their website said. It costs $6.7 million to make it. But their value is zero. Um, zero goes to PUD, zero goes to the port, zero goes to the library, zero goes to the county, zero goes to the city, zero goes to the state, and zero goes to the school. Um, the one on Fifth Street here, we have, uh, 9,000 goes to the schools, roughly 8,000 State General, city goes, city is 6,000, county is 1,000, library 800, the port is 600. Um, that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. We have several buildings in Bremerton that pay zero taxes, um, that should pay in excess of $90,000 a year. Um, my taxes go up every year. Like I said a million times, I don't mind paying. I, I want a decent fire. I want a decent police. I want a decent city. I want the roads clean. I want the streets decent. I want my kids to go to, my grandkids to go to decent schools. Um, but the homeless problem is only going to get worse if, if we don't have places to live. I was excited to hear about St. Vincent de Paul putting something in, which is a block from my house, but they may not get funding for it. Um, those are the places that should get the zero tax liability. Um, uh, what's the other one? Um, PSHS with, uh, their community health with their apartments on the east side. They should get the zero, the zero across the street from 7-Eleven, the PSCCH, they're putting something there too. All good programs. But everybody knows, and it's been proven time and time again, if a person's needs are met, they're not doing drugs, they're not doing crimes, they're not doing all of the things that make things bad. I mean, it just, it's, it's common sense. And I think that the money that we're missing here from all of the zero taxes, um, it makes a difference. And whether you guys see it, I think that we that live here see it. Nobody can live off of what we make here to buy, to pay for other people. Thank you.
Anyone else for public recognition?
Hello, everyone. Well, my name is Carolyn Stein. I am with the Washington State Science and Engineering Fair, and we have heard quite a bit of different kinds of topics tonight, and they're all very important to our city. But I would like to lighten it just a little bit and bring you some good news. Um, we, uh, we held our science and engineering fair last, um, March, and we had taken our top students into the international fair, and we've gathered them from all across the state. We had 20 projects, 21 students, and 30 supporters went, for a total of 51 people for the Wise team. And with those students, those 20 projects, they brought back 20 international awards. That's outstanding for our students and our state. These are grades nine through 12. These are high schoolers. These are our future scientists, our future engineers, our future problem solvers for all of some of the problems that we've heard tonight, and many more that we don't even, can even conceive yet in our world as we go forward. Another time, this from the state fair, they can go to the Genius Olympiad, and two of our students went there. They won first place, and they are being taken to Tunisia to represent the United States there with their projects. One of them is on speech, on social awareness. Another one is in science endeavors. Next up, grades six, seven, and eight, the Thermal Fisher Scientific Junior Innovator Challenge. Those are some of the things that go on, that happen, that are really good. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler, for doing the Mayor's Challenge at our state fair. I think he highlighted a couple of those students a few weeks ago. And we do outreach. We go, I know I just was at the Marvin Williams Center with our local students and working with Kitsap Create and trying to promote our fair and our area. And 5,000 of these mark, of these save-the-date postcards just went out, um, for next year. And we'll be at the Puyallup, at the Washington State Fair for three days. My family already knows. And the WSTA 2025 and all the other wonderful things. And I just wanted to also share that if you are favorite, uh, if you liked the America's Got Talent, you saw the robot dogs? Hey, hey, it happened at the state fair this year first. We had, thanks to the United States Army who brought Spot, Lieutenant Cloud brought Spot, a, a robot dog, and entertained all of our students and our public. And it's remarkable what we do. And I just want to give a shout out to the fair, to our community, to all of you for supporting it. If it hasn't been, they're in our 69th year, always in Bremerton. We support Bremerton. Thank you for, Bremerton for supporting us back. Um, you know, it's the science fair. We'll figure it out. Thank
Is that it, folks? Okay. See no one else. I'll close public recognition. I'll turn to our city clerk for our public hearing.
Item number 6A, Public Hearing and Resolution Number 3399 to adopt the 2026 through 2031 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. Our presenter is Managing Engineer Gunnar
Welcome, Mr. Fredrikson.
Good evening, council and citizens. Um, thank you for the opportunity to present. Um, this is pretty much a housekeeping item for us. We have to do it every year. It is an RCW. Um, we do have to adopt a transportation improvement plan. Um, and this plan needs to be filed with Secretary of Transportation, uh, no more than 30 days after adoption. What I think the easiest way to do this is just to go through the changes that we did from last year. And Dave, if you can do slide number two, please. So our changes were Parish Creek Culvert replacement moved from tier one to tier, from tier two to tier one, as it is now fully funded. Uh, we, uh, received word on the 11th Street Corridor Design Project, which was a tier three project. It's moving up to tier two because it is now partially funded. Uh, we don't have construction money yet, but we do have the full design money for that. And then in tier three, uh, based on what we received out of the Transportation Element Update and the concurrency projects, we added two projects to that. Uh, Marine Drive, um, improvements at Kitsap Way, and then, uh, Kitsap Way at Corbett Drive Intersection. Um, again, they're both concurrency projects out of our Transportation Element. And then what we also did was we added and ranked the Pine Road, uh, Construction Project and put that into tier three for consideration for funding. We ranked and added North Wyckoff Reconstruction, 24th to 26 Streets, uh, ranked and added Way Finding Implementation Phase Two. And Phase One has just been completed downtown, as you know. Um, but with this project, we also included into Charleston area wayfinding and bridge-to-bridge trail wayfinding projects, which were, uh, on the old list. Uh, removed the north-south corridor bike pad backbone improvements as the project limits were unclear to us, uh, and appears to be redundant to a number of other projects. And we also removed the East Bremerton Cheerdeuce path as it was redundant to other projects. Um, and then for next year, what we're looking to do is, uh, we are, next slide, please. Uh, we are currently working on a standardized project summary so that we can get a good description for all those projects, um, for future, for future use. Uh, score and prioritize all the projects in our tier four or bullpen, and then evaluate and rank, uh, projects from the active transportation plan, and hopefully an updated ADA transition plan for inclusion on next year's tip.
So, the purpose of this public hearing? The purpose of this public hearing is to accept public comment and action is anticipated.
Hi. I'm Bremerton Council President Younger and Bremerton City Council Members. I'm Diane Iverson, a resident of City Council District 7. I'm here tonight to support improvements to our multimodal infrastructure here in Bremerton. Our city and county are dangerous places to walk, bike, or use a wheelchair. We can do so much better. Our tip project list is an important document. I have many ideas on how to improve the tip selection process, but tonight I just want to focus on one project that should be prioritized. I strongly support the Jarston Park to Kitsap Lake Trail. Planning this 3.1-mile trail was a collaboration between Kitsap County, Bremerton, and Yule and Tree Farm. The final feasibility study was completed in 2016 and reported the chosen route to be feasible, desirable, and would qualify for numerous federal, state, and regional grants. West Sound Cycling Club collected 1,700 signatures from local residents who went, who want to see this trail built. There currently is no similar paved, forested, shared use path free of cars in Bremerton or Kitsap County, open to families, runners, skaters, and cyclists of all ages. Kitsap County Emergency Management notified the city it supports this 3.1-mile trail. I'm excited to see the county's enthusiasm for this project. It would improve access for first responders who need to get from Bremerton Airport to the north part of the county. There is no safe connection between Goris and Bremerton for cyclists. This proposal, this proposed trail offers a viable alternative for commuters and recreational cyclists. If you've ever cycled along SR3, and some of you have, to Goris from Bremerton, you know how dangerous it is. The J-DK Trail is a win-win proposition, a safe place for all ages and abilities to walk, bike, and roll, and an emergency access corridor for first responders. With strong political leadership and an attitude of problem-solving and pertinent issues, this trail can be completed. Thank you, council, for supporting this project. Your support is keeping this dream alive. Our kids and families deserve a safe place to walk, bike, and roll. This trail will do just that. Let's not wait another nine years to make this dream a reality.
Yeah, Levine, Bremerton. So, it, I'm also upset that the trail's not on this plan. And it sounds like it was removed. If I could get some clarity, if you don't mind. Just, it sounds like it was removed because there was efforts related to it being done elsewhere? Is that what's happening here? No, it just was removed. Why is it removed, is my question? Like, why don't we have this trail as part of that plan? Because it, everything I had heard prior to now sounded like it was supposed to be. Like, I've got, I mean, I have family in other cities who have fantastic trails and they've asked to have it. So, what's going on with this? Can you explain what this means?
It's actually on tier three.
Tier three?
Which means it's unfunded.
Unfunded?
But it's still on our project list to be done.
It's still on the list to be done?
Yes.
But it's unfunded. Why is it unfunded?
We have to find money for it.
That is the story of everything, isn't it? Okay. Well, it's unfunded. It sounds like it's still available. So, where's the funding? What are we spending money on that's really stupid, that we could spend it on a trail instead? So that when my family gets a new bike and they want to come visit me, that they can come visit me and that I don't have to regret buying a non-motorized bike and could have a trail that I could ride my bike on because I can't ride it up Sixth Street without getting run over by a car? That's my suggestion. We should have it funded. It sounds like that's the problem, which is great. At least it's not removed. So, that's my thought, to fund that project.
Jose Camacho, Jose Camacho, friend of Smith's Coles, rock the block. You probably catch me every once in a while limping to get up here or coming up here out of breath. And when I look at this transportation plan, actually, these different portions of city planning, they're all balkanized and disconnected. And no one seems to have the creativity to look at these technical plans and then use some creativity and think about people. Because when you look at this plan, it doesn't take into account people who are using crutches, canes, who can't walk, people who are handicapped, homeless people. And the solution is, you look at these very technical plans and you imagine people, not Wesley Larson, imagine actual people. You've seen him here. And say, when we, okay, we just have this fantastic transportation plan. Now, who does it fail? It's not hard to do. Who does it fail? When I, for instance, you've gotten rid of the, substantially the ability for the public to zoom in a call, a comment. And although that may seem not a big deal, there are handicapped people who have no voice because of it. There are people who can't walk because of it. So, the transportation plan does not have a way for them to come up here without being out of breath, as I frequently am. So, you look at these plans and ask yourself, who is being missed by it? And then you find a fix for that deficiency. And what we don't have here is the homeless. The police are actually persecuting them from resting spot to resting spot. When Squinsey Square is up and running and looking all pretty and shiny and the developers are throughout, you can bet that's going to be the Mecca for homeless persecution. So, there ought to be a way to compensate. Naturally, there's a way to leverage the small size of this city. There should be more creativity. So, it's nice when you make nice presentations on glossy paper and these presentations are well-delivered. You're forgetting people. There are tons of people out there. And when they don't have help, like public bathrooms, like a way to get around, as Justin La Madrid has testified, they hang themselves in the woods. They lose a leg. They are without help. So, these technical plans are great, but trust me, you always leave people out. That is the problem of this city. You leave real, actual people out who are powerless, who are not Wesley Larson.
Mr. Sorensen, could you see if someone's online so they can talk to us or ask questions via Zoom?
There's no hands at this time.
There's no one, thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to comment on this before I close the hearing? Seeing none? Close the public hearing. I'll go to the council for a motion. Do we not want to have a tip plan? For our Councilmember Frye?
I move, move to approve Resolution Number 3399, which approves the city's 2026 to 2031 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program and allow the mayor to forward the resolution and plan to the Puget Sound Regional Council and Washington Department of Transportation.
Do I have a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Now we're in business. Okay, we'll open up for comments. Councilmember Frye?
I happen to sit on the Public Works Committee. And it has been incredibly educational for me. When I first joined, I really didn't understand how everything was connected. It's probably still not as connected as well as it could be, but that's what transportation is all about, making progress and connecting things and people. I think a lot of it actually is about non-motorized transportation. I've seen projects such as View Ridge Safe Routes to School included and move up the chain as it gets funded. I'm very excited about the non-modal, multimodal part of that. You know, I'm excited with this tip because I think it shows real progress. I do believe that staff has been working with the Public Works Committee to create a tip list this year that really forwards the priorities of the council more than it has in the past. I want Public Works to know that I see that and that I, I respect that and I'm thankful for it. I'm sure we can do even better next time, always. But I feel really good about this, this year's tip. And I want to thank Gunner for all your work on this. It was a long road, no pun intended. But it's got a lot of what we wanted in it. And we've got tons of projects waiting to get onto it, I'm sure, and ideas. But it's a process that I can respect. So, thanks to staff very much.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Frye, or Councilmember Coughlin.
Thanks, Council President. Now, I want to echo the thanks to Public Works and Public Works Committee for putting this together. I want to just make a few comments in response to items I've heard because I know we are, we have been working hard to, to really diligently come up with a better system for selecting which projects get applied for, for funding. So, to be clear, there are many city planning studies that happen over the years. We accumulate a long list of potential projects in the city. And the tip is a formal mechanism by the state. Mr. Fredrickson, I'm going to ask you to correct anything I get wrong at the end here, but I can do my best to sum up first. But it's a mechanism that we are formally saying to the state, hey, here's our list of, of well-thought-out planned projects. And we need to do that in order to be eligible for funding. So, if something's not on this list, we can't really apply for, for external funding for it. And we know that this list is longer than the amount of projects that we expect to get funding for down the road. So, so essentially, as far as just this one specific item goes for tonight, it is a pretty routine list, just to make sure that if something's not on there, we want to make sure it's on there. But what we've been trying to do is to get this, this scoring system to make things more equitable and transparent. Because I'd say in the past, it was a lot more ad hoc between, you know, staff and council of, oh, which project should we, you know, this grant has come up. Okay, great. It's a walk-by-pipe grant. What's the project we want to apply for? It was a lot more ad hoc. And so, I know one, one thing we started to, to work towards collaboratively between council and staff was a scoring system that said, all right, is this a project that affects large swaths of the city or is it, is it a tiny part? Is it helping out an area of the city that already has a lot of existing improvements and probably does not need more? Or an area of the city that's poorer and is really dire need of connectivity? And a lot of elements have gone in there. So, I know, I'm actually grateful that the prioritization scores were shown alongside the tip because it shows the progress we're making. I think what I want to be clear, though, is that just having them in the tip right now is not indicating that that priority is yet set. So, we just kind of got those list of scores, those prioritizations, in Public Works Committee the other month. And I know what we want to do over the next year is council and staff look at all those and say, hey, do these, do these make sense? Right? I know staff did the, the best job they could, scoring everything and prioritizing it. And our next step is to say, hey, did these projects fall out, you know, how we thought? Did, did everybody up here think that this project was a 10 out of 10, its top priority, but for some reason got a low score? Or vice versa, a low-score project ended up really high? And if it did, we want to dig into that and find out why. But what we're working towards, and we're not, we're not 100% there yet, but what we're working towards is a system that is transparent into all these projects, that folks can glance at and understand what each project is, why it scored high or low. And that will help us plan out in future years which projects to really strategically apply for. So, I want to say there's a lot more work there to go. But, Mr. Fredrickson, if I got anything wrong or anything else to fill in there, please do so because I know it's important to folks that this makes sense.
For the most part, what you had was absolutely correct. This is intended to be a six-year list, which means these are the projects that we think we can accomplish in six years. And as you know, that list is very long and it really isn't a full six-year list. But it's also includes projects because when the funding opportunities come up, we never know exactly what they are and what they'll fit. So, we want to have enough on there so that maybe we do have a project that's a little higher ranked, but we can't find funding for it. And we have one that's just below it that we can find, that we can go ahead and get that next project done. So, that's correct.
Perfect, thank you. And then for J-DK Trail, I just want to be real sure, is that TR-47 on the Goris Sinclair
Yes, TR-0047.
Okay.
And that is for, for the planning of it.
For the planning of J-DK Trail, okay. I think that that's why. Because I remember, one, it's obviously a council goal and priority to support that trail. And I remember we got it on last year, and I know it wasn't taken off, so. But I, I'll say, another thing I know we're working towards, too, is this project list of, of having a description with each item so that it's really clear what each project is because...
Correct. And that's the thing that we found when we started going through all those old planning studies and looking at them, is that a lot of them, especially in the 2007 non-motorized plan, really did not have a good project description. So, we were left to kind of try and figure out what the intent was from literally 20 years ago.
Perfect. So, no, appreciate it. I think we're making, making good progress in our, all our planning, but I just want to flesh that out. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Chamberlain, and then Vice President Ravalowski.
People are going to be talking a lot about the J-DK Trail. I can already tell you that right now. Got a lot of support behind that. But I think, you know, what I'm super happy about, which is something that when I was door knocking back in 2021, I heard a lot about. And it sounds like you might be hearing a little bit about it, which is the Pine Road debacle, the unsafe conditions on Pine Road. And I got to learn a little bit more about Pine Road. And there's not actually been any work done on it since we were annexed. And that was quite a long time ago. And so, I'm excited to see it move up in priority. And I appreciate, I appreciate that. I hear there's more information to come on that. And in the meantime, I think I'm still going to be connecting with constituents to have them, to teach them how to report and how to let y'all know when there's issues. It's in a really terrible state in some parts of it, especially on the Hill, coming up from Sheridan going towards Sylvan. A big complaint about that space, about that block of road where Sylvan and Pine Road meet, or that there's not a real safe way to get from these apartment complexes to, and anywhere on the road, a safe way to get to the park. And so, I'm looking forward to see, to see this done, hopefully, before the next four years is up. And so, I appreciate that. And I'm, I'm pleased that it's been moved up. It's still, to my knowledge, unfunded, but I think that there's more to come on that. So, that's all I really want to say, is that I support it mostly for my selfish needs for my constituents, that Pine Road is being moved up in priority and added to the list. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Ravalowski.
Yeah. I'm the Chair of the Public Works Committee. And I'm not, I had a 30-year career in public works, inspection and design and traffic calming. And I still don't fully understand the scoring system that we represented, what, about four weeks ago? I got so much information that it crashed my computer twice. I mean, we have iPads. So, I look forward to coming up with a simpler way to let the public know which projects we think are important. And at this time, these are ranked by staff. And there hasn't been a lot of input from council for ranking. And council, or most of us, I'm sure all of us, take input from our constituents about what they feel is the most important. So, I really encourage people to let us know what projects you see in your neighborhood that you would like improved or throughout the city. I don't, you know, there's been statements made that these are well-thought-out, fully scoped plans. And that, that isn't the case yet. That doesn't get... the case yet. That doesn't get to the point until we have some funding to do at least preliminary designs, because things change a lot. So, I don't want, I've had constituents complain that things were on the list, and they wanted to know specifics about it, and I couldn't give them specifics, because they haven't been designed yet. They haven't been completely thought out. And I'm not saying that staff put things on that they haven't tried to, to scope out from different planning documents, but there's still a lot of work to be done on it. And so, hopefully, by February or March of next year, we have that better thought out, so the public fully understands it, and frankly, so council completely understands what the scoring system. Now, I know Mr. Fredrickson has done an incredible amount of work. Where we were even six months ago, it's vastly improved now, and there has been a lot of work done, but there's still a lot more to be done. And I want to really emphasize that this is more like a wish list. There's no way we're going to have enough money to do every project on this list in the next six years. That's not going to happen. But what we, as a council and the constituents, our job is to figure out what we feel are the most important, and make sure staff understands what we feel is the most important, so it's easier for them to match up grant opportunities to what the residents of Bremerton feel they need the most. So, I, I really commend Gunner for all his work. I, I know what it looked like a year ago, or five years ago, and 10 years ago, and even 20 years ago, because I've been living in Bremerton for 26 years, so I've been looking at the tip for that long. So, it's a great change. It's a really good step to get to a better place, but we're not done with our work yet. So, I am going to support that we pass this tip, because if we don't pass the tip, then we can't apply for any grants for any of these projects. And the city of Bremerton, our finances do not allow us to build any project over, I mean, we're stretched to do a project over $100,000 without looking for grant opportunities. So, I think this will help our staff and help the residents of Bremerton.
Thank you, Councilmember Mochler.
Thanks, Council President. So, I don't mean to spring this on you, the rest of the council. Of course, it will be new to all of you, but it just struck me this evening. Mr. Fredrickson, there's been no change in the amounts of the top six programmatic elements of the tip in Tierwan. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And if I remember correctly, there's been no change since, like, 2019?
That would be correct.
Right. So, these are not scored. They aren't projects. Everybody likes a project. I love a project myself. But most public works department spend the bulk of their time just doing maintenance, so that when little kids are riding train and bikes on a quiet residential street, the edge of the road isn't crumbling away so that they tip over and fall. They are doing maintenance to make sure, for the same reason that we do pavement maintenance, to make sure that the roads don't get into terrible condition, they are doing maintenance on all of these things to save money down the line. I'm sure everybody in this room realizes that a dollar in 2019 is worth a lot less in 2025. So, I guess I would urge us to really start thinking about this basic maintenance that is vital to our quality of life. We can't possibly be doing as, as many linear feet of sidewalk in 2025 as we were doing in 2019 for the same amount of money. I am going to vote for this tip, because I, I think that the argument that otherwise we can't apply for any grants, but I would strongly urge the Public Works Committee and the Public Works Department to think about working hard on the maintenance. That's what most of us see. Like, when, yeah, I'm just going to use District 6 examples, hey? So, I'm driving along Olympic, up that curve, past the cemetery, and there's no striping there. There used to be striping. In certain places where people have parked their cars for years, you can still see it. But these are the, okay, almost done. These are the day-to-day things that we expect, and it's the things that people who are newcomers to our town, and we have a lot of them, you know, really need to know, where is the edge of the road? And to make this a place that has better quality of life and is more attractive, maintenance. Only other thing I have to say is, there's two projects in District 6 that are level of service. There is nothing that is level of stress that, in all of District 6. So, again, I'm proposing Snyder Avenue and 13th Street between Kitsap and Wykoff. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Councilmember Goodnow?
So, just a, a quick comment. It's been kind of alluded to, but there's a, a good bit of funding we can get for transportation projects. It's only eligible if it is on this list. So, it's a tracking tool, but it also, it means we put a certain amount of thought into it, and it helps make a project eligible. And as you see, sometimes it takes us years to piece together the funding and keep moving in the right direction. So, that's all I wanted to add.
Vice President Revulovski.
Yeah, one thing, Councilmember Mochler, I don't think there's any grants available, or very few, for maintenance. So, we just have to be creative in getting more maintenance dollars out of our budgets. But for these being on the list, they're just for grants. There's no, there's no grant to, to pave a residential street. But there is for streets that residents live on, like arterials. Yeah.
I'm sorry, point of order. Can you say that into the microphone? No?
Sorry, Councilor Chamberlain.
All right. Any other questions or concerns or comments from the council? For the record, seeing none, I call for the question.
Councilmember Frye?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Revulovski?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Mochler?
Yeah.
Chamberlain?
Heck, yeah.
Younger?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for your support.
This concludes public hearing. Next on the agenda is general business. General Business Item 7A, Resolution Number 3400, to provide guidance to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for 2027 funding priorities. Presenter is Council President Younger.
Well, thank you. So, before I get into the gist of the resolution, I want to explain just real briefly, at a very high level, what is lodging tax for those that are not aware of it. And if anybody here is a subject matter expert, and I know we have the majority of the council has been on the Lodging Tax Committee at one time or the other, feel free to correct me. But in, and also, obviously, our city attorney can correct me, and actually, Mr. Jett probably is our subject matter attorney expert on this, so I'm sure he's listening very closely to whatever I say. High-level, 10,000 feet. The legislature many years ago, through an RCW state law, said that municipalities can collect up to 4% of the hotel bill and use it for, for the, make it as simple as possible, putting heads and beds to attract more customers to come to visit your city and basically do the churn. Get more people to go into hotels, and then you generate more money. So, what does that mean? Let's say hotel bills, let's just pick a number, $100. $4 to that bill, $104. So, it's $4 goes to lodging tax. So, if you're saying, oh, Mr. Younger, $100, then you can't get a hotel room for, okay, $150, so it's $6. You get the gist. All right. So, what does that mean for the city? I'm going to use 2025 numbers. Last year, there was a committee held. Councilmember Chamberlain was Chair of it. There was $833,500 dispersed, or will be dispersed, for 2025. Under continued funding, we have a contract with the, the Admiral Theater. They get $150,000 of that. Also, under continuing funding, we have the Kitsap Conference Center, which the city owns, which continually needs support for tourism, which gets a set aside of $250. So, our, under total continued funding, we have $400,000, about half of our lodging tax annual revenues. The other portion, $433,500, was dispersed amongst 18 different recipients. These are organizations that are qualified to receive the funding. They meet the criteria. And the dollar amounts that they received range from a low of $3,500 to a high of $60,000. These organizations use the money for various reasons that are allowed under state law, including advertising their event, or events, or their organization for the entire year. Last year, the city council commissioned a study. It's called the City of Bremerton LTAC Transition Study. I've read the document many times. It's a 17-page document. I will not bore you with the details of that. It is in the packet. The main gist of this is that the marketing of tourism for, specifically for Bremerton, is needed. And the consultant indicated that, they suggested that we create a Visit Bremerton DMO. DMO stands for Destination Management Organization. And they also recommended in the study, they recommended that we invest in an alternative tourism avenue, citing our Pendergrass Park. So, if you're not aware, for the past five years, we've had a proposal under the mayor's administration to expand Pendergrass Park, to make it a regional soccer facility to draw throughout the Pacific Northwest for, obviously, for soccer venues, which would largely arguably benefit those hotels outside of downtown Bremerton. And lodging tax is eligible money for the buildout of the Pendergrass Park. The resolution before us tonight, specifically, and it's on page two of your packet, says the following. The city council requests the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee prioritize the following items from the Westbrook Main Report, and it's, and I'm going to emphasize this, 2027 funding. So, not 2026 funding, which is decided this year. The council collectively decided, we, first of all, we've been talking about this for a couple of years now, but we also wanted the organizations to know that this is for 2027. Give you plenty of time, because the money that you've been used to may not be there. Anyways, the funding recommendations for 2027 from the Main Report is for one destination marketing organization focused on producing and implementing a tourism and marketing plan, specifically promoting the city of Bremerton and local Bremerton-based tourism operations. And to improve facilities at Pendergrass Park in recognition of the value of the youth sports travel market and the positive impact it can have on overall tourism market in Bremerton. I forgot to say that, if you're not familiar with this process, the LTAC committee consists of, as I mentioned, one council member serves as chair. He or she does not vote on the allocations. And then there are two representatives from the hotel or industry that collect the tax.
Two, correct.
And there's two from the recipients. Any one of those 18, or anyone else that could be eligible, can be selected on this, and they exclude when it comes voting for their organization, but they have input on other organizations. I don't want to get into what's happened in the past, and I think you could see the potential for conflict on this. And you can also understand why, if you read the report, that a more concentrated effort by one organization representing all 18 of these that are, that got this year's funding, plus others that didn't apply, is probably a more effective approach. Now, having said that, this does not preclude any applicant for applying for 2027 funding that's eligible to apply. But this is a clear direction from the city council, if this passes tonight, this resolution, that we are advising the LTAC committee to put emphasis on those two items, a destination management organization, and the buildout of Pendergrass, which is quite a bit of a capital expenditure. Cannot all be done in one year. However, this money can be bonded, or something similar to a, a line of credit could be used with the lodging tax money used to pay that off. So, I think I explained it thoroughly enough. Now, I'm going to open it up for the public for your comments. Go ahead.
Council President, council members, my name is Irene Moyer, and I serve as the President and CEO of the Greater Kitsap Chamber and Visitor Center, and a current recipient of City of Bremerton Lodging Tax. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening and for your leadership on the proposed resolution to establish a single destination management organization for the city. We are pleased to share our support for this forward-thinking effort to strengthen and unify the city's tourism strategy. The Greater Kitsap Chamber and Visitor Center has long been committed to promoting Bremerton and supporting its visitor economy. Our work has consistently aligned with the city council's tourism goals, prioritizing collaboration, efficiency, and positive outcomes for our businesses, residents, and guests. We understand the vital role tourism plays in shaping economic vitality, civic pride, and regional appeal. Over the years, we've witnessed the impact of cohesive messaging, accessible visitor services, and regional partnerships. We've also experienced the challenges of a fragmented system, where disconnected efforts lead to confusion and inefficiencies. We believe that consolidating tourism functions under a single DMO will build on the solid groundwork already in place and better position Bremerton for regional and statewide competitiveness. While we recognize that this transition may result in changes to currently, current funding distributions, we are optimistic that a unified approach will ultimately foster stronger collaboration, greater clarity, and long-term sustainability. We also want to emphasize the continued importance of the Greater Kitsap Visitor Center, located here in downtown Bremerton, as a trusted and accessible resource for visitors. Maintaining and supporting this vital asset, we hope will remain a priority as the city moves forward. We appreciate the resolution's clarity around continued eligibility for LTAC funding for other qualified organizations, and commend the council's balanced approach for maintaining support for important events and initiatives. We also look forward to a fair, transparent, and balanced RFP process in the selection of a DMO, one that reflects the spirit of collaboration and accountability outlined in this resolution. As Bremerton works to define its tourism brand and strategy, we believe that this process must be rooted in authentic collaboration with local stakeholders. The voices of those who shape the city's identity, its events, culture, small businesses, institutions, must be part of that vision, and we look forward to contributing our experience, resources, and passion to help elevate Bremerton as a thriving destination in this process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I am Aljolyns Berber, the Executive Director for Visit Kitsap, a destination marketing organization for all of Kitsap that has been funded by the city of Bremerton to promote the city of Bremerton tourism. We were also funded by the Port of Seattle and collaborated with the Greater Kitsap Chamber to promote tourism, responsible tourism, to the city of Bremerton between 2024 and 2025, and really excited about how well that project went. We're also members of the State of Washington Tourism Alliance and Washington State Destination Marketing Organizations, where we advocate for statewide lodging and hospitality. We are in support of the resolution to designate a single DM- We are in support of the resolution to designate a single DMO for Bremerton starting 2027. As the current countywide DMO and proud tourism partner, this is so necessary and a strategic step forward. We ask that when you consider, or when you start drafting the RFP, that you take into consideration the cost to sustainably maintain a DMO because of the multiple touchpoints within the tourism ecosystem and then our local ecosystem. You know, for example, working with the Transportation Department for the city, it's important that the DMO have that empowerment to be able to have those collaborations and relationships with different departments, as well as our other ecosystem partners like hotels, downtown associations, chambers, and visitor centers, museums, and other attractions. The Westbrook Main Report is clear, Bremerton is ready for a unified, data-driven tourism strategy. And with that, having that led from city council and the city of Bremerton too, that's going to be so key for having that clarity. The current fragmented approach does dilute impact and causes confusion, especially for visitors. A dedicated DMO selected through thorough and competitive, transparent process allows the city to align tourism goals with measurable economic returns while leaving space for smaller-scale initiatives to still be supported separately. So again, piggybacking off, people can still be, events can still apply. Gig Harbor and Spokane have moved to scoring rubrics and ordinance-based funding, empowering tourism-driven results, real results. And we also want to emphasize the success of one DMO doesn't mean the end of others. It means a more focused use of public dollars, more collaboration, and accountability. We remain committed to the city and all its stakeholders in this transition. We believe Bremerton's tourism potential, and we're ready to help that vision to life. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Stein, Executive Director, Washington State Science and Engineering Fair. I'm not a DMO. Our organization are volunteers. We've been here for 69 years. I'm coming from a different direction. I believe that what you're doing is in focused with what we're doing. I have felt your frustration. Please know that you have, must have felt ours as well as being on the other side of that nonprofit, trying to do that application, trying to understand how it is that we can best fit in. I will tell you that we have worked, and when I say we, I mean other nonprofits that are smaller, not the larger ones, not the organizations, let's call them. But let's be realistic. Some of them are less hospitable to our local nonprofits and to our organizations. Some are more difficult to work with. I implore you, whatever you do, you go forward, please take the time to think about this, to understand what you're doing, and more so, ask us, have a conversation. Please don't ask me just to send in comments. That's not a conversation. Let me sit down with you and explain to you some part of the plan so that we, as your stakeholders, your smaller stakeholders in here, and when I say that, I mean, I'm the one that brings you heads and beds to these hotels. We had 600 students planned for last year for our fair, and we ended up with 800, okay? You know, we do bring heads and beds. We have knowledge of what works, what doesn't. We have knowledge of who works with us and who doesn't in the county, and that happens. But marketing definitely works. I know, because I've been boots on the ground. I went out and I talked to the Baymount Hotel, and they were at capacity for our weekend. And was it because of the state fair only? No, there was another fair there, another event, excuse me. But did we make a difference? You bet your boots we did, okay? The Oyster Bay Inn, I just spent several hours with them, and it was discussing how to bring more people to Bremerton. And it wasn't just on fair weekend. We were collaborating over what to do. You've got to remember, this is my city too, okay? This is our part. This is what we do. This is what we have done. Please let us be a part of that decision-making. Let us help you shape this for the future. We were not asked before that report was generated, certain people were targeted. We were not one of them, yet we've been here for 69 years. Please take us into account. We have your best interest. Please have ours. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sorensen, anyone online?
There is not. Jose Camacho, Friends of Smiths Cove, Rock the Block. This is about LTAC. And I really appreciate President Younger's explanation of the entire process. That is so rare, and it's significant that it doesn't happen more often. I looked at the writings in the agenda packet about this agenda, about this item. And the reason why I did is because I was in a hearing about LTAC in April 16, I believe, of 2024. It was your actual criticism of the LTAC process. So I'd been wanting to learn what was the problem and did they fix it? And contrary to what I just saw from President Younger in that hearing, I had no clue what council members were talking about. It was rather surreal because Rebelowski, Chamberlain, and Denise Frey were, seemed to be actually agreeing with me. That was really disconcerting. And the problem was that Quincy Square had asked for, or the city version, alter ego of Quincy Square, which is an opportunity zone for Wesley Larson. They asked for $45,000 after a deadline for the LTAC submission, and they got exactly that amount unlike any other applicant. And they were all concerned that they had no choice but to give this to the Quincy Square applicant because of the inherent structure of the process mandated by statute. And they talked about they needed to come up with a fix, or maybe they did. It was so cryptic. So often, your so-called public hearings are so cryptic, we cannot tell what the heck you're talking about. And I am a paralegal who investigates. I am a legal ferret. I'll spend a freaking year to get to the nitty-gritty, but we should not have to. We really should not have to. Just say the actual words, so it is an actual substantive public hearing. So when I see this, and I did try to look, I wanted to see if there was an identification of that problem, that Quincy Square $45,000 problem, and if there was a fix, and I still don't know. And again, that was an example of this favoritism towards developers. So I still don't know, looking at all this, hearing your very detailed explanation, which is kind of reassuring. I still don't know if that problem is fixed. If that built-in favoritism for the developers behind Quincy Square was fixed, I do not know. And we should know.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Camacho. Anyone else for a public comment on this item? Seeing none, turn to the council for a motion. Councilmember Fry.
I've been looking forward to making this motion for three and a half years. I moved to pass Resolution Number 3400, providing guidance to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee regarding 2027 funding priorities.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so now we're open for discussion. Councilmember Fry.
Well, you know, Mr. Camacho is correct. I did lead the Bremerton Chamber of Commerce for a few years before I retired, and it was a real chance. Before that, I had spent 20-some years in nonprofit. I was a social justice warrior in those days, and then I became a small business warrior. And I started looking into tourism as a business. So many of our local businesses are connected to tourism. And I started looking into LTAC, and of course, the chamber was a recipient because of the Armed Forces Festival, and we provided a visitor's center and so forth. And I had that experience of being a grantee in that award process, and it was confusing. It seemed ripe with conflicts of interest, and it was very frustrating. And there was a lot of competition between these entities, all well-intentioned, to market Kitsap County and Bremerton as a tourism destination to increase our economic development engine with tourism. And that frustration was built in to the process, to the system, and it really wasn't fair to the applicants, and it certainly wasn't fair to Bremerton. And then people started taking sides. They like the executive director of this organization, or they like the executive director of that organization. And I think we're hearing some of that come through, you know, tonight. I want this to be professional, you know? This is going to be a data-driven decision. We've been doing our homework now for three years. I think this council knows more about tourism now than most councils do within Kitsap County, and I'm proud of that. But man, has it been an uphill battle because these organizations, these grassroots organizations that put on events are very passionate, and we love them. We love these organizations and events. What our job here is today, I'm no longer, I'm still a social justice warrior in many ways, I'm still a small business warrior in many ways, but my job here on council is to be best for Bremerton, for the city of Bremerton, and we need a single DMO. I am so impressed that the three major providers of DMO services here in Kitsap County all are testifying in support of this. I mean, think about that for a minute. One is going to be selected. These are competitors. They've built collaboration. By the way, I was the one that wrote in the need for collaboration in that application process, but they've built that, and they have those strong relationships. They're sitting together here tonight, and Jessica would be here if she could. I love that. I love seeing that. I think that's going to be a natural condition of this DMO, is to collaborate with others in the county. So I applaud you. I applaud your work. I'm looking forward to this process. I'm being, looking forward to this process being over and when we can have greater impact for those dollars for the city of Bremerton and our residents. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Who was our second? Is it Councilmember?
It's me.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I served as LTAC Chair this year, and I really appreciate the guidance that Councilor Fry provided to me in the transition. And I was really interested in the LTAC Committee because I'm pretty sensitive to issues whether it's conflict of interest. And I just, you know? And really, sitting here on council, I do feel like it's my fiduciary duty to look out for things like that, right? So I wanted to kind of jump right into it and explore it and work with it. And I hope that I did it justice in serving my legal role as a facilitator. And woo, it was hard not to insert my own opinions, but instead to facilitate the group and to let them make the decision. And it was, I didn't like the outcome of how everything was awarded. I didn't, you know, it just, but that's what the group decided, that's the recommendation. It's also been really interesting to, a couple of things to learn along the way. I mean, I was under the impression that we had to take this recommendation last year, was that we have to take the recommendation if we get, we don't want it to get sent back because then we have to start the process all over again. And yet, this year, we send it back, and we learned, well, we don't even really have to take the recommendation of this LTAC Committee as it was explained to us before that we did. They're an advisory committee. And so I did feel, and full disclosure, I did feel uncomfortable with the idea of us finding this extra funding to give to the Quincy Square project because I felt like other projects, how are they going to get the in? How are they going to have the opportunity to come and apply for more funding? It felt uncomfortable to me. It's legal. It's legal, the way that we did it, and that's fine. It just didn't feel right. I do, do I have a three-minute timer on me too? Look at that. You might want to. I appreciate this resolution. And Council President, is it okay if I ask you a couple of questions about the process that I think I didn't ask in the study session? Because Carolyn Stein brought up a really great point. I wanted to know about your advisory committee and your stakeholders and how you reached out to them in crafting this resolution.
So we had, as I believe we're all aware, so we made this a council goal, and then we had an ad hoc committee, just like we have for all our other goals, ad hoc committees, that we meet every other month in front of the full council. And in this case, it was Councilmember Fry, Councilmember Vice President Rebelowski, and myself. And we took the LTAC Transition Study. We discussed it a couple times, two or three times with the rest of the council, and we came up with this decision to go ahead and draft this resolution based on the transition study.
And the transition study has some great data, and I really appreciate the mention about things being data-driven. And so I'm just curious, in the study itself, I guess I'm feeling uncomfortable with missing voices. And I think our Washington State Science Engineering Fair, I am missing a letter, Washington State Science and Engineering Fair, yeah? Okay, all right. Is a really great example of an event that really does get heads and beds in, and yet they're testifying that they weren't consulted by our consultant, by our, and by our ad hoc committee, and that's concerning to me. And I think that what I really appreciated about our last study session was, and I'm not going to speak for Councilor Coughlin at all, but I really appreciated some of his sentiments, and I'm sure he'll have his time too. And I, we had kind of had an impasse in how we, just two of us, I think, didn't like some of the wording, or we didn't feel that it was, we didn't feel that it was open enough. We wanted to keep opportunities available for other folks to apply for some of the funding. So...
So I'm sorry, you have a point of order. Councilmember Fry.
It almost sounds like the person that seconded the motion is arguing against the motion.
Yeah, but also a point of order, again, I stated during my presentation, this does not preclude any entity from applying. In fact, we can't do that. We're just setting our preferences of the council as a whole through this resolution.
And thank you for that consideration, but I think what we're talking about is a foundational disagreement in the wording of the resolution that two of us have, which is not inaccurate information, at least on my part for now. So I'll just say, I would like the language to look different, to be more inclusionary for other entities, such as the Washington State Science Engineering Fair. Other organizations may feel excluded based on these priorities, and the recommendations may come based on these priorities to the exclusion of other groups that are legally able to apply. It's all in how you word it and how you package it and advertise it. So that's all I have to say. I'm not saying yea or nay against it. I'm just saying, it just doesn't feel 100% right to me, and that's where I'm sitting with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council, Vice President Rebelowski.
Yes. LTAC has always made me really uncomfortable. It's something that council has to accept their recommendations, even when individually or as a whole, we disagree with some of the recommendations given by the LTAC Committee. For instance, LTAC is supposed to be supporting tourism within the city of Bremerton to get people to... people to stay in our hotels which pay this tax. And yet, some of the, at least one recommendation was for an event out at the fairgrounds that was never going to have anybody stay in a Bremerton hotel. And as for Quincy Square, I just want to make it clear, I'm not, I most likely don't fully understand a lot of the funding for Quincy Square and there's some things that I'm very uncomfortable about, although I support the project. That $45,000 that they were awarded was, at the last minute, we were told by city staff that they had no operations plan and this Quincy Square was going to open up within a few months and we had no idea, staff had no idea who was going to operate it or how it was going to be operated. So after the huge investment of public funds, we couldn't, I couldn't let it sit without an operations plan of some kind. So that is how I decided to vote to move forward with them getting the $45,000. This LTAC money, right now, we're pulling in about $700,000 a year, right? Seven, eight hundred in that ballpark. There's new hotel rooms that have opened up in downtown Bremerton, so they will be paying that 4% tax too. And so a portion, you know, we're obligated because of a contract written by others that the Admiral Theater gets X amount of dollars and that the Convention Center gets X amount of dollars. This DMO will get X amount of dollars, but there's still money that's going to be left over. And of that, this resolution is saying that council feels a priority is to look at ways to fund the build-out of Pendergast Park so we can have sports tourism. And according to my niece, whose kids are all in swim teams that travel all over, she literally spends thousands of dollars almost every weekend, she's got a lot more money than I do or you do, at hotels and restaurants in other towns. So I feel it's a good investment. There still will be money left over depending on how the DMO chooses to award money and there's still going to be a committee to look at it. So let's say there's $100,000 left and I'm making up numbers. I don't know exactly what percentage would be left over. That money is still going to be available for like operations of certain tourism buildings, like the History Museum, like the Roxy. There's other places that do, by state law, they are allowed to apply for these LTAC dollars for operations. That doesn't mean that they're going to get them, but they're still going to be available for funding. It doesn't preclude not funding that or funding a parade down in Charleston or other things. So I don't like the way LTAC was operating. I think this is a much better way to have one direct marketing organization use these funds. So I'm going to move forward with a yes vote on this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Gooden?
Yeah, I think that, you know, we're mostly looking to provide the committee with some guidelines and directions. So I do really fully support the idea of a DMO. I've worked with them in other cities and it's been a little more of a free-for-all here. But some of the things they can do is they can take sort of, you know, like interest attractions and they can do a piece in a magazine or in the airport or, you know, rack cards, you know? The rack cards don't need to be on the Puget Sound Washington State ferries. They can be, at least when I used to be more in tourism, I would put them in all the rest areas beyond Washington State or out in east, way out in eastern Washington to, so that instead of one attraction trying to do marketing, the DMO can take them together and create, like whether it's a card for museums or a card for, you know, excursions or things like that and they can put it together. They can feature different businesses and magazine articles and things like that. So I really, really support the idea of the DMO. So, you know, basically what we're saying is like, hey, we would like to carve off a piece and like, let's really have impactful marketing for the city using a DMO. Then also I do feel that the idea of Pendergast Park is a good priority. There may not even be an ask for Pendergast Park come 2026, but it's just, we're putting it there. I'm sorry, well, I guess the request would be in 26, for 27, but anyways, but maybe it will. And when that maybe gets realized, then maybe it'll be something else or maybe there'll be a few years. But I just, and I've received lodging tax for different organizations I've been involved with. I've applied here in the city, I've applied and Baywatch Island, I've applied with the county. And we just really need to make sure we're doing the best we can to help the whole city with the decisions that are made for this committee. So we're trying to give that, the committee, not this committee, the lodging tax committee, some guidance on how to move forward. So I'm hoping it's not as big and scary as it sounds. I also want to kind of say that I hear the idea of the language that was brought up. I'm less concerned with that because we're just kind of documenting our priorities. And then how, and it's our staff pushes that message out to the community, they can tweak that message. The chair of lodging tax has some say in how our staff is going to put the message out and make sure that it sounds accessible and people understand the changes. But it could definitely be more competitive, but it could also, especially for smaller groups, it could be easier. They could work with the DMO and the DMO could handle it for them and then they don't have to do the administration of these grants and things like that. So anyways, I think it's good. I've kind of heard everything and I think I'm still in support of this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Mokler.
Thanks, Council President. I just wanted to say I've been following councils since 2018 and I've watched many people, I've watched Michael Goodnow and Pat Sullivan and others present LTAC and they all had that strange battered look, that kind of deer in the headlights. I've been through LTAC and I've come out the other side. Never again. And Councilor Frye, I just really want to give props to because after, you know, the regulation amount of complaining, I'm like, oh my gosh, you can't believe this, Councilor Frye said, you know what? There's a solution. I'm going to figure out this solution. And she figured it out and kept bringing it back to us and the result is what we're seeing tonight, which is we're going to have someone with expertise in destination marketing take over the destination marketing. I'm a big, big believer in expertise and I look forward to voting yes on this.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Coughlin?
Thanks, Council President. I do really appreciate the work on this and I'm going to sum up some of my thoughts from study session and some concerns I have. And it's kind of difficult because, you know, Councilmember Goodnow and I have had to recuse ourselves from all the LTAC discussions over the past couple of years since we're involved with local organizations that get those dollars. And so on one hand, I feel like the two of us are maybe the most experienced, having, you know, filled out applications every year, submitted, collected all the visitor data, submitted that visitor data, the reimbursement request and been through it all. I want to say absolutely, the idea of a single DMO that focuses on Bremerton, that these Bremerton LTAC dollars are being focused on Bremerton, absolutely love it, in favor of it. And I am so glad to hear the amazing organizations, we got a letter from and two present here, that I know do, all do such a good job representing Bremerton, that idea of collaboration and coming together to form one DMO is fantastic. I think that is such a win-win and all the talk about, you know, one rack card, one digital ad that represents multiple organizations, absolutely a win-win. The concerns I have on this resolution are kind of twofold. I think first, it doesn't quite reflect all the findings of the West Burke and Main Report. For example, there's a reference in there about having multiple visitor centers and it recognizes the value of that. And it's not clear that one single DMO will operate multiple points of contacts and whether a visitor center is a physical, you know, walk-in where you can talk to somebody and say, hey, what's there to do around here? Where's a good bite to grab and eat? What should I do? Or a touchscreen or a physical, you know, flat map, that still is really important. And so I feel like it's not quite captured. And then the major one is facilities. I've, you know, tried to really get across that the RCW of LTAC has a significant component on the funding for the operations of tourism facilities. And that is very separate from advertising, which is called out in the DMO, that those core operations are critical. So Pendergast, absolutely great facility, but I really don't agree with making it the sole focus and not having anything else in this resolution. Because I think when you look at what draws people to cities for tourism, when you go and you visit a city that you like, it's never, ever one very specific thing. It's usually a fabric of tourism facilities. You stop because you've heard friends, oh man, that city has, oh great, get off the boat and go check out. Hey, there is a, there is a great local art show. There's a theater. There's a museum. There's this, there's that. It is, as having reported in LTAC, I can tell you, it is sometimes difficult because it is hard to say if that one organization is solely responsible for bringing in that one individual to town. You know, it can be tough sometimes and so it really is about that fabric. And for Bremerton in particular, I think we really need to support arts and culture. And these are often organizations that are not profitable themselves. Arts and culture is rarely profitable from the ticket price alone, but I think they're key to making a vibrant city that folks really want to visit and stay in. And if we don't support it, if we spend too many dollars on advertising and not enough on facilities, we're not going to have anything to advertise. There's not going to be a reason to come to Bremerton if we don't have physical facilities and events for people to visit. And so some of the language I was hoping to get in here that makes it clear that LTAC will not just focus solely on Pendergast and then advertising through a single DMO, that there are other definite worthy facilities to fund. And I do not think that's clear in the resolution at the moment, which is why I suggested in study session adding it and I appreciate some support for that, but I'm not going to make a motion to amend because I know there wasn't enough support in study session to add that language. I'll just wrap up with, absolutely, I think there is a significant need for looking hard at these dollars and the different organization and events and making sure that they are getting a good, you know, return on investment. There's absolutely more analysis that can come in there and it can be frustrating to see certain facilities that operate year-round that, you know, and let me say absolutely, these funds can be used for utilities. They should be used for staffing. None of this happens for free, right? Especially arts and culture. It is not fair to say that organizations can operate solely volunteer-based without any staff or without having to keep the lights on. But it is frustrating to see some small events that may be drawn small crowds get even more funding than some organizations that operate year-round and drawn year-round tourism. I think there is a need for reform, but I just see this resolution as too narrow. I'm sorry. I think it's just being too narrow. We're excluding too many of our long-term funded things and I think we need to think a little more comprehensively about what creates that fabric of tourism facilities in our city that will draw people here year-round. But I will not, Council President, you and I will not be here on this council next year. So I just hope that future council members, if this passes, can keep that in mind and make sure that a lot of local facilities still get funded. Thank you.
No worries. So I did hear the terms ROI and I don't want to dig down into the weeds here, but if you read the study, if you had a chance to read the study, you realize that I doubt seriously that any of these come close to breaking even. For example, there was testimony tonight about 600 visitors or let's just call it 600 rooms. And if the average hotel rate's $150, that's $6 in tax. So that would be $3,600 that those 600 rooms would bring in if that was indeed the case for that event. Okay? If the recipient received upwards of $35,000, that equals 5,916 rooms. Well, one of the problems is in the report studies and talks about it is that we have all these metrics and understandably, it's difficult to measure, but we had applicants saying they had more room stays than we have rooms in Kitsap County, period, by like, I don't know what percent, read the report, but it was huge. So, look, this isn't where we stop. This is the conceptual framework if this passes tonight. The next thing, in my opinion, and then we talked about this during study session, is the council will look at RFPs from other cities and counties in Washington State over the next several months. And we will, at a 10,000-foot level, pick and choose the criteria, the selection criteria that we would like the LTAC committee to consider. Because keep in mind, it's the LTAC committee that's going to pick the DMO, not the city council. The city council could say, I want the following metrics. I want you to be able to report quarterly. I want you to be able to have some statistical reporting or whatnot. It's all outlined in the report. I don't want to rehash that. But this is without a doubt, a paradigm shift for the city of Bremerton and LTAC. We either do this or as Councilmember Coughlin mentions, I'm not here anymore. I'm dropping the torch if this doesn't pass tonight and I'm not sure it's going to get passed ever again. We have the momentum to do this tonight. If we don't do it and we stay stuck in the past, we'll find then we're stuck in the past, but I don't want any part of that. All right. Do we have any more questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yeah. I have a couple of points of information that I really should have inserted before, which is, we keep saying rooms and this is, I just want the public to understand, this is not just hotels that we collect tax from. There's short-term rentals, so that's your Airbnbs and your Verbos. That's not even a room. Sometimes there's three rooms. Sometimes there's seven people that stay. It's different. It's a different amount of tax that's collected. I would like to see next year, data collected on that as well. So as we have a, we're moving toward this idea of a unified DMO, I just want to put that out there and I will be, if I'm still here next year, asking the future president to be on the LTAC committee again. And so I hope to be a part of that process. I will be for the rest of this year and I'm looking forward to the change. I'll, I'm going to vote yes on this, but I just want it to be clear that there is some more missing data and those short-term rentals are a huge gap in that data. And I also heard Council President say that the LTAC committee will choose the DMO, but I do believe it's just a recommendation. We are actually the ones that will approve it. Am I wrong or am I right in that assumption?
In the end, yes, the council does approve based on whatever the LTAC recommendation, but they're the ones that will select, submit the recommendation to the council.
So we will choose it? Council will choose the DMO in the end at the recommendation?
Council will either approve or not approve funding in the end. It will not choose the DMO. It will be the LTAC committee. And I'm looking at my attorneys here and they're nodding their heads, so that is the way the process will work.
Okay. I mean, we can get into semantics, but in the end, we will approve. Okay. All right, that's it. Just a couple of points of information. We're both right. Hey, I like that. I'll take it. I'll take a 50-50 win on that. What do you think about that? That's all I really have to say. Thank you for your work on this. I'm looking forward to the direction that we're heading and being a little more focused because I do feel a little bit like a, coming out of it like a deer in headlights after the process because it was pretty chaotic. And so I appreciate your leadership in this, Council President. And to the Ad Hoc Committee, thank you as well.
Councilmember Coughlin?
I did want to just say, although I, unless I hear something else, I'm not likely to vote for this, but I do appreciate that it's not taken effect this year, that it will be, again, for the $20, $27 for applications next year, so that this year will proceed kind of as a status quo. And I say that because on a city budgeting side, I think the city is going to need to prepare. If LTAC dollars are not the source of supporting a lot of local organizations and arts and culture events, then the city needs to prepare to support those from its general fund or in some other manner. Because there are organizations that will not exist without these funds that they have relied on for a long time. And so we better, we better prepare for that. Local organizations, especially arts and culture, depend on support from their local government to exist. They cannot exist otherwise.
Councilmember Fry.
When I started taking a look at this and how the funding might play out, I threw out a figure, and it was the, for a DMO. And it was the combination of the awards funded for DMO-type proposals. And it was the three organizations that applied for that type of DMO activity. That still left plenty of money for the other organizations. I don't think that we should look at the consolidation of funding for disparate DMO activities as necessarily a competitor for the smaller events and brick and mortar that, that Councilmember Coughlin is talking about. It'll be up to that DMO to determine how best to go about it, and up to this council, the LTAC and this council, to make sure, again, that the greatest impact is achieved by the investment of these dollars. Not simply to keep something going, but what is the impact of the investment of those dollars? And that, if, if that's the history museum, that's the history museum. If it's the Roxy, it's the Roxy. You know, that's all that we can do, is, is try to have the greatest impact for our investment. When, when we make awards through the LTAC, we are investing tax dollars not paid by the residents of Bremerton, paid by the visitors to Bremerton. And we have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that that's impactful investment. So I don't see those smaller events and, and businesses going away. I ran nonprofits for 20 years. I was very successful because I did not, I refused to operate from a scarcity mentality. Losing one source of funding should never close your doors, and if it does, it wasn't being managed correctly.
All right. Any other questions or comments? A third time? Okay. Go ahead. Please, go ahead.
I just want to be clear that as I read the language of this resolution, there is nothing that directs the DMOs, a DMO that is selected, to then suballocate funds for operations of facilities or events, so.
No worries. And I think I can address this in saying that those details will be worked out during the RFP process and what the council's looking for. So again, I'm going to bite my tongue here. Are we about ready for our vote on this? I think that's the appropriate response, actually. I call for the question.
Councilmember Coughlin?
No.
Rebolowski?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Yes.
Mochler?
Sorry. Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Fry?
Hell, yes.
Younger. Younger.
Yes.
Motion carries. Six yeses, one no.
Okay, so now we'll turn to-
Council President, may I please request a five-minute break?
How about this? We're on Councilmember Report, so I'm going to go ahead and start on my immediate left. And if you need to take a break-
Isn't it the second meeting of the month?
Well, but you want to take a break, so I was going to give you a break. You want to do, you want to do your report first? You go ahead.
Should I start first now?
Go ahead, please.
Sure.
Wow.
So I'm going or not?
If you're ready, you can go.
I am ready.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Hit it, Pearl.
Wait a minute. I'm, well, the slides are in a certain order. Am I going first or is Counselor Mochler?
It's the second meeting in the month, so the last-
So Councilmember Mochler's going to go. Go ahead, Mr. Sorenson. I forgot that you had those queued up, so. Yeah. This meeting hasn't gone that smooth. I thought it would go smoother this evening, so. Best-laid plans. Go ahead, Councilmember Mochler.
There's just something about LTAC.
Yeah, there's something about LTAC.
Okay. All right. I'm timing myself. District 6 Council Report, Rhododendrons Looking on a Giant Chimney, next. So my next town hall is Bastille Day, July 14th, and that will focus on affordable housing with three parts. Housing for homeless, you know, homeless shelters, subsidized housing, like Bremerton Housing Authority. And the third part will be affordable housing, housing that costs one-third of one's income. So each speaker will have 10 minutes. There'll be a few minutes for clarifying questions, and then it'll be an open discussion for at least the last 45 minutes. 100 Oyster Bay Avenue North, come on down. There will be no town hall in August. Okay, just letting everybody know. Next slide, please. Okay. Nope, I, okay, so I'm going to tell you about my slides. So Lulu Hadon Park is technically open on the 19th, which is tomorrow. However, Director Barker, I hate to put you on the spot here, but I understand there's no electricity. So people who, can people use the bathrooms if they bring flashlights?
I'll just quickly answer that question. We do not have power yet. So the only thing that that affects is the drinking water out of the fountain will not be chilled yet. And the, it will not be chilled. And the restrooms will not have lights, but there are windows. And I went in and tested them out today, and you can see plenty well. And the park hours are sunrise to sunset, so you shouldn't have to worry about after-hours being in the restrooms. But we'll have power soon.
Is there any protection to keep people out after sunset?
We lock the doors.
I mean of the park? No. Okay. Thank you, Director Barker.
It's set up as every other park, yes.
Yes, I know, sadly. I am down at Pendergast Park almost every morning, and because the park is open, people say, this is where I want to do my donuts with my monster truck. And there are huge grooves in all of the areas that you would think a truck could get to, and that you would really be surprised that a truck could get to. Anyhow, so Lulu Hadon finally complete, except for, you know, the electricity. And are the trees in? The trees are not yet in. So apart from the electricity and the trees, is the irrigation done? The irrigation is done. There you go. So please come on down if you don't have a Juneteenth event, because this has been on council's budget since 2021, and I'm very happy, at least, I'm very happy to announce that it's happening. Other than that, I am sorry that I do not have my slides here. So I am just going to wish you all a good week, good couple of weeks, and stay safe out there. I would say things about why action minutes are now used, why the Planning Commission, which used to have great minutes, now has only action minutes, why Kitsap Transit Board, which used to have great minutes, now has only action minutes, and why this council has only action minutes. But I feel that Counselor Chamberlain will talk about that at great length.
Councilmember Goodnow?
At length.
I like action minutes, especially since we have video recordings of most of these meetings.
The majority do.
Okay, so. I don't like when somebody just hands me a transcript that was auto-generated. All right. I'm going to share a slide here. So Quincy Square is coming online very soon. I really do think it's a city asset. It is, yeah, there have been property owners, or as we call them sometimes, developers that are, property owners on the street. This is not a project that was by or for developers. It's for the city. It's, it was, the whole city was revamped around Fourth Street because it used to be Fourth Street was the nicest street back when City Hall was down there. And anyways, it's a longer story. But the Roxy is hosting a, I just want to also say, for all the folks who say that I've been on the payroll of developers, that has never happened, and it's a lie, and I would love you to stop saying it. And so I'll leave it at that. So we are doing a concert on next Saturday, the 28th of June, at the Roxy at 6:30. You might say, why are we doing it June 28th? That's a crazy day. You might say the Quincy Square won't be completely done at that point. And I can tell you, the answer is because the Jones family is able to attend. So we've got family members coming up from California. Obviously, Judge Jones and Quincy's sister will be coming over from Seattle, with some other folks in tow. It's going to be a fantastic show. We have a, I think, the number changes a little bit, but I think there's a 17-piece orchestra that has been put together for this event. And it is all specific, it, you have to take the arrangement that Quincy Jones did and then translate it sort of for this orchestra. Then we have some Grammy winners onstage. We have Alvin Shih, who was from Take 6, Oya, O-Y-A, and also Reggie Goings. So they'll be the vocalists that will be onstage that day as well. So it's going to be a great, a great chance to kind of, you know, just relish in the music of Quincy Jones and kind of the inspiration for so much what's going on down there. If you haven't been down there lately, it's looking great. It's always just a mess. I, anyways, we cannot keep things clean enough down there, but we're getting there. So anyways, you can go to the Roxy's website, Google it. I'm sure you can find it online, or, well, roxybremerton.org if you're interested in tickets for that. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Rebolowski?
Can I have my slide, first slide, please? Next Tuesday, I'll be having a district meeting at the Bremerton Food Line, starting at 5 o'clock. The two major topics that I would like to update people on is our conversations on the multifamily tax exemption program, and then a discussion on the possibility of increasing the transportation benefit district fee for vehicles registered in the city of Bremerton. Currently, it's $20 per registered vehicle. I, and we can raise it to 40. The county could also swoop in and take that extra 20 to use it for their projects. There's been a lot of discussion with various council members of how they'd like to see that money directed. And I have my priorities, but I want to hear what my constituents' priorities are. And then anything else you would like to discuss? I'll try to give an update on what's coming up in this, this summer for the agenda that, at least what I know of, yeah, they give us a little forward of what staff is going to present to us in the next few months. So anyway, I hope you can stop in, and it's not just for people who live in District 4. I really encourage other people and the other residents of the city of Bremerton to stop by if they have any interest in either of these topics or other things that our council is doing. Can I have the next slide, please? So this was John Hoff, this is John Hoffman. He and his wife were shot because they're politicians. Can I have the next slide, please? Melissa Hort admitted her husband were assassinated because she's a politician. And the guy even shot their dog, who had to be euthanized. I mean, what, I don't know what the world's coming to that, or our country is just so full of people who cannot talk about their disagreements anymore, that it's coming to this. And I just, I would just want everybody to think about why she gave up her life, and I'm sure it wasn't willingly. And then I think that's it for my slides. On a happier note, I want to make sure everybody knows about the Community Block Party for Juneteenth tomorrow. It's from 1 to 5 up at the Village Event Center. And that's the center that the Pi family opened up. It's on the corner of Sheridan and Perry. And it's very family-friendly. They're going to have food trucks there. A lot of local volunteer organizations are going to be there. And it's, a lot of the money is going to go to support Doc Loves the Kids. So I hope a lot of people in the community can stop by at least for a little while. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Coughlin?
Thank you. I don't have a lot of slides, and I was going to keep mine brief, but mostly to echo those sentiments. We're living in some pretty divided times. And although we think that's national, sometimes it comes down to being very local. And we have to remember that we're all members of the same community. We're all human beings. We all do have a soul. We have a soul, and we care about this community. And we're all trying to work hard to do our best to get this community better for everybody. So absolutely, let's keep things civil, have conversations. It's what this is about. But I do, on that note, I did want to wish a celebratory Juneteenth for tomorrow for everybody. And I know Councilmember Fry will have a slide on the celebration tomorrow at the Village. And just that we, we remember, and we appreciate how far we've come, but we remember how far we have yet to go as well. I think that's what tomorrow will be about. So thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Fry.
Thank you. Tea me up? I read this morning, I, you know, we often, here at the city, find fault with the county. I'm sure they do the same thing. But I wanted to commend our commissioners for being realistic with the budget. It wasn't any surprise to me that they've taken action. They've actually instituted a hiring freeze. I just want to read that first paragraph. This was written by the three of them, a collaboration, Orin Root, Christine Roffus, and Katie Walters. And this was today that this came out. "Proactive leadership means facing challenges directly and taking action before problems become crises. That's exactly what Kitsap County is doing, as we address significant structural budget challenges that require immediate and sustained attention." Then it goes further, talking in more detail. Next slide, Dave. This is the excerpt verbally from some of the text in our biannual budget that we adopted, Biannual Budget 2021. Biannual Budget 2526. Despite expenditures outpacing revenues, the city has budgeted to maintain current service levels, which will result in utilizing reserves from the general fund to sustain these services in the 2526 budget cycle. That is in conflict with what the county is doing. Next slide. I want you to take a look at where we are so far this year. The green is expenditures, and the blue is revenue. So as you can see, we are outspending our revenue per our budget. Next slide. So I dug a little deep, because budgets matter to me, money matters to me, not because I want to get rich. As I used to tell my nonprofit staff, no money, no mission. Okay? It takes money to operate. 2017, the city population was 40,630. 2025, it's 46,667. We've seen a 15% increase in the population. But when you look at the city budget, it was 150 million, which is $3,692 per resident. This year, it's 250 million, which is $5,357 per resident, an increase of 67%. I don't mind that, as long as we have a balanced budget, don't dig too much into reserves. But I want that money to have impact. If we're spending that much more per capita, I want to know the story behind that. And I very much am looking forward to our mid-year budget review, where we really can dive deep into that. I want a chance to learn the story behind these numbers, not just assurances that all is gonna be okay, because it's better to act quickly than too late to avoid a, avoid a crisis. That's what's happening in our state, that's what's happening in our county. Why would we expect Bremerton to be any different? We have to be ready for this. These are gonna be tough conversations. Next slide. On a brighter note, let stew celebrate. Tomorrow is Juneteenth, the real Juneteenth, the day of our friends, truly, our council friends, the two Phee's and all their, all their clan, at the Village Event Center, which happens to be in my district. I'm very proud of that. We're gonna be celebrating tomorrow from 1 to 5. Family-friendly, it always will be at the Village. That's what they do. Great food. It's gonna be music, activities. Come on down, talk about grassroots. You don't get any more grassroots than the folks that go to the Village. You know, these are people that really care about the people in our community, and I'm looking forward to being there tomorrow and celebrating with them. So please try to attend. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chamberlain.
Thank you. Do I have some slides? I should have just a couple. Which one will be first? While we're, I feel like, oh, that's not mine. I, it would, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be me, it could have been mine. It wouldn't be me if I wasn't reminding you about the next cleanup event, which is over at Cafe Profetto, which is actually also in District 2. My, my neighbor, she took my favorite coffee shop away from me. I think it was actually the census. And so it's gonna happen June 21st. Come get a T-shirt, come get a donut, get a cup of coffee, go out with some great people, and clean up around the Warren Avenue Bridge. And they do clean up in District 1, however. And so meetup is at 8:30. They actually head out, maybe a little before, if a group is ready, they're gonna go. But the official headout is at 9:00 AM. Next slide. And then the next Stephenson Canyon Stewardship Group will be the following day. And that's gonna be June 22nd, from 3:30 to 5:00 PM, we're meeting, we're going rogue, Director Barker. We are going rogue. I warned him this would happen. We are gonna meet at the Morris Street Trailhead. And so I've got, the real power of a stewardship group with something like Stephenson Canyon is involving your neighbors, and there's so many trailheads, we're gonna hit them all. And so the Morris Street Trailhead, there's a couple of neighbors there that want to take care of their trailhead, and I said, hell yeah, we're gonna go to Morris Street next. So all are welcome. Plenty of ivy to pull. I showed some pictures at our last council meeting of the befores and afters, and I'm looking forward to taking some anger out on some ivy. Yeah, it was good therapy. I highly recommend it. With everything going on right now in the world, if you're frustrated, come pull some ivy with us off some trees and open up some, some space for folks and for the trees to breathe. And that is all I have to say about this slide and all the slides that I have, which were two. And I have a timer on myself. I don't know if I'm even gonna meet that five minutes, but just a few things I wanted to say. I guess the reason that I had a problem with the consent agenda, and I think that we've even talked about this as a council before, is what's the point of receiving public feedback on the consent agenda if I can't request for something to be brought after hearing public comment to general business? I was shut down, and people here saw that. I was shut down from trying to bring a point of information, and I think I need clarification on the rules. What can I do after I hear public comment if I'd like to discuss something further from the consent agenda? If I can't, what's the point of allowing people to talk? If somebody's name is misspelled, I would have liked to make an amendment to have that correctly spelled. I think that it was a very simple question, and so that's why I voted no. As far as action minutes, of course, I agree with action minutes. There's a recording to go back to. And for people who think that I have my face in the computer, well, that's, that's where the packet is. And I take notes. What my colleagues know is I take notes, and this has come in handy over the years, because I go back to my notes. I'll flip back through. Like, for instance, on the 4th, I can tell you the exact, or the, order the people spoke, because I take notes. I take your names down. I do the best I can with my creative spelling. And I have the, basically, the exact order of things from the consent agenda is the exact order that I have them written down. And I'm gonna read them out from public record. Jose Camacho under the consent agenda, Stormwater Outfall and Smith Cove, Sound West Group got in the way. Earl Burt, Francis Street Project, ongoing and going well. That was a consent agenda. Public recognition, I'm not gonna go through everything, but I have Peggy Erickson, Kitsap Erase Housing, Unhoused, Bill of Rights. And then it went to Molly Brooks, Housing Systems Team, and then it went to Joey Hayes, and they continue to read that Bill of Rights. We have Daphne Gibler, Remax Building is Vibrant, and I could keep going on, I'll just read the names. Akuyer Karen Vargas, representing Juneteenth, Jeff Allen, I know Jeff, Food Co-op, Wendy, Loves the Bremerton One app, Joe Walter. I have somebody else. I have Jocelyn, I have Cindy, I have Carla, I have Robin, I have Marwan, but wait, Marwan didn't speak because he didn't have, we couldn't hear him, so we had to defer him. Then we have somebody Love Child, I didn't get the name. Then we have Jose Camacho. Then we have Spurling, the developer. And then I have District 5 of MTE. Michaela, oh, I'm over my time. Basically, what else I'd like to say is I am really resentful of Mr. Coffey's comments about drug abuse. It does, substance use disorder is beyond homelessness, it is beyond socioeconomic status. What is true about substance use disorder is it doesn't matter how much money you make. It doesn't matter. Rich people, they have access to the resources to hide it. So don't come into my chamber, where I'm sitting here in recovery, and tell me how my disorder is, will represent itself in everybody in this room. And it's so unfair to say that everybody who's homeless is, has substance use disorder or will do drugs. Not everybody that's homeless does drugs or gets drunk. I'm so resentful of those comments, and I'd like Mr. Coffey to have a cup of coffee with me, so we can discuss this further. That is all, thank you. Wait, one other thing. One other thing. We had a resolution last year passed when I was president for the, for a pride flag to be displayed, June 28th until the 3rd week of July, correct? I would like to make sure that the public knows that that is a resolution that we passed, and I'm looking forward to seeing that regalia displayed this year. Thank you.
Thank you. And for my report, just the clarification, and I don't want to rehash all this, but we can discuss it in a study session, but in, in answer to Councilmember Chamberlain's objections, if a council member wants to move an item on consent agenda, general business, you make the motion before we vote on the consent agenda. I think we've all determined that's the proper procedure. So again, if we want to have further discussion, let's just have a study session, it's no big deal. It's all good. Okay, with that, we're next gonna go to the executive session. So if you've been hanging around because you want to talk to your favorite council member, you're gonna have to wait another 15 minutes. I'm sorry. The council will now meet for 15 minutes to discuss potential litigation as allowed on RCW 42.30.110, Princesse I, and action is anticipated. So let's head on back there. Thank you. Okay, folks, we're back in session, and I'm gonna ask our Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Brett Jet, to summarize the action before the council and read a motion for the record, please.
Yeah, so the action before the council is just regarding the abatement of nuisances and code violations of various property, properties throughout the city. So the motion would be moved to authorize the city attorney's office to pursue any necessary legal action to abate nuisances and code violations, collect fines imposed for nuisances and code violations, and collect any fees and costs associated with the abatement of nuisances and code violations at 917 Wilbert Avenue, 417 Chester Avenue, 2815 Cascade View, 5600 Kitsap Way, and 135 Olympic Avenue in Bremerton, Washington.
Okay, thank you. Now I'm gonna turn to the public, and I'm gonna see if any members of the public wish to comment on this item. Anyone? Dave, could you check online, please, for the record?
There is nobody online.
There's no one online? All right. Again, ask the public, anyone that wants to speak? No? All right. I'll call for the motion, or call for the question, please. Just say, say, move.
So moved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the question.
Councilmember Revalowski?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Mockler?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Abstain.
Thank you. Frye?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Six yeses, one abstention.
Okay, thank you. A reminder, the next regular study session will be on Wednesday, June 25th, beginning at 5:00 PM, in the 6th floor council conference room, with a remote option available via Zoom. This concludes tonight's regular council business. This meeting is adjourned. Good night, folks.